Here, in this handout, what I've kind of done is gone through and explained what's going to be the same and what's going to be, what would be different for preparations for work sessions, finance committee, and then regular session meetings. The biggest change for moving to two meetings per month is the preparation timeline. So at our work session, we had discussed continuing to prep the agenda on Wednesdays, but that Wednesday would be one and a half weeks prior to holding that regular session meeting. So we would send out a draft of that agenda on Thursdays, and then the council would get a copy of the draft agenda on the Monday preceding the council meeting. So that would give council a solid week to go through what is basically going to be the finalized agenda. We'll understand that we'll have some late submissions the week of that Wednesday that we prepare the agenda, but by the time that Monday rolls around, the goal is to have the bulk of the agenda prepared and ready to go. And then we would release the agenda the Wednesday prior to the council meeting to the public, to then give members of the public additional time to review the agenda. Finance Committee and work sessions, those two agendas would be prepared in a similar manner. They'd be prepared a week and a half in advance of the meeting, and then a mostly finalized agenda would go out to the council on the Monday prior to the council meeting, and then the public would get a copy of that agenda the Wednesday prior. So that's giving the public five whole days prior to the meeting to look at what's coming up on the agenda rather than getting it on Friday morning and turning around on Monday having a council meeting. Any questions about that handout at this point?
Just as Kelly, probably nitpicking, but under when this would start, it said it would start the second Monday in January. That infers that we would still have a meeting on the first Monday in January, and I don't think that's what you mean going by the calendar. So it would really start the first Monday in January with the rules being that we'd meet the second and the fourth, correct?
Yeah, I guess that's what I meant by writing that, is that we would not meet on the first Monday in January, if that's the timeframe that you want to use for implementing that. We would meet on the second Monday in January. If you want to use a different effective date for the rules of procedures and the meeting change, that's fine too. I mean, we are now into November, and January's going to come up pretty darn quickly.
No, I'm going with your same schedule. It's just your effective date is really first of January. January 1st, this new schedule would take place, and the new schedule would be the second and the fourth Monday. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yep. And we still, Kelly and I still have to sit down with finance and with planning. I did have an initial email or text message discussion with Noel, but we need to sit down with finance as well in this.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
So Kelly, I see that for work sessions on the first and third, we wouldn't start before 3:30. Are we envisioning that those work sessions would go, would last as long as like our current session currently does, but just be work session, or are we expecting in this schedule for that to be done earlier than what we currently go through, including work session, finance, and regular session?
Kelly, you want to go to that other sheet? I think you have it broken down. Or did you already do that?
No, we haven't done the other sheet yet. If we want to move to, kind of piggybacking off of Mr. Greider's question, if we want to take a look at work session schedule example, that handout, I don't think we would necessarily always start a work session at 3:30. It would kind of depend on how many topics that we would have to discuss that day. The thought with not starting before 3:30 is that some of our council members do work, and we want to be respectful of their, of their time. In this handout, something that we've discussed is if we're doing meetings twice a month, it would be good to have departments provide updates about operations, what's going on in their department, new initiatives that they're thinking about, et cetera, and then also reserving some time within the year to focus on our budget preparation discussions, or CIP, or other projects that council wants to really dig into. And then also on, you'll see on that handout that we have a fifth Monday. We discussed having council planning sessions on the fifth Monday where any kind of topics that council wants to dig into, we can have those discussions on that fifth Monday, or if there's strategic planning that council wants to take a look at, that could occur on the fifth Monday as well.
And, and as a council member who does have other work, I appreciate not starting before 3:30. I just think about the citizens who might also be working up until 3:30. I know you're saying it's not a hard and a fast deadline, but I know if we want to be more open, which I think this plan certainly does, that would be the only one caveat of maybe moving that back later. So people who do work and are particularly interested in hearing one of our work sessions would have a little bit more flexibility to do that. That's my only concern.
Sure. Would you then envision starting the council meeting and finance committee later in the evening to move a work session back? Because on average, I'd say our work sessions are about, if we have a lot to discuss, they're about an hour and a half to, up to two hours long.
Yeah. Sure. No, that makes sense. I, I just think that, you know, I know it's hard for folks who are working to, to get here, you know, maybe they get done at five, they have to get their kids settled, and then they have to try, right now they try and come online, but if, when we're eventually back in the chamber, they have to come in. So just trying to, to thread the path in terms of like, you know, being effective with our time, but also making sure that everyone has access, that, that wants to have access. So if, if that means we start a little bit later, I'm okay with that, but that would be up to the will of the majority of council.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Well, Kelly, Pat Morrissey?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I have thoughts about this whole thing. First of all, I'm against going to two meetings, but for reasons I've said before, but I, I just had heard Councilman Greider talked about the first and third Monday, and then I hear this, the second and fourth Monday, and the last time we discussed this, I heard people talking about having two regular meetings a month, and then on the meeting, the Mondays that we don't have a regular meeting, we're going to have work session meetings, and now I see this. And I see this also, you know, part of the two meetings per month thing includes a statement that the second and fourth, so it doesn't conflict with the Waterloo School Board, which does meet on the second and fourth Monday of every month. It seems to me like we put the cart before the horse. We haven't voted on this, and there's plenty of people out there that do not want us moving to only two meetings a month. Not just myself, but you know, I have a, a proposal, and that is, let's put it to a vote. We have an election, another one coming up in a year, and why don't we put this on, on the ballot should the council move to two meetings a month, so that we hear actually from the people if they want us doing this. We could also put on that same ballot should the mayor's term of office be moved to four years rather than two, starting in the election of 2023. We could also put down suggestions on that same ballot about the, having at-large positions, one being on the north side, one being on the south side of the river. These have been talked about before, but to me, moving to these two meetings a month is fixing something where there has not been a problem. I, I mean, everybody got a message from Mr. Don Miller, who is an astute elder in our community, talking about us moving, being one of the 10 largest cities in Iowa, moving to a council manager form of government, you know, and I've heard arguments before that most of the cities, larger cities in Iowa, have moved to two meetings a month. Well, if we're going to say that as a justification to move to two meetings a month, then I guess we should follow Mr. Miller's advice and move to a council manager form of government. Two meetings a month is not necessary. Four meetings a month has been fine. It's not been, it, it, it gives the public more of an opportunity to sit down and talk and to share information, plus they get information from us. So I, I guess I know I've carried on with many different things here, but to me, this just doesn't seem to make sense. I hate like heck to see people spend their time and energy putting together proposals that haven't been voted on yet, and I think it should be submitted to the public as part of our vote next November.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, I would just add, if we wanted to entertain that, putting that on the ballot, regardless, the council would have to meet, discuss, make sure that that's something you actually want to do, and then you'd have to vote on it. You'd have to pass a resolution to put that on the ballot. So I think that if you want to talk ballots, if you want to talk not ballots, regardless, we have to have this discussion in a work session and end up taking a vote. We'll have to take a vote to move it to two meetings per month if that's what the council wants to do regardless, but I think we're talking about the same thing, more or less, whether it's on a ballot, whether it's happening in this meeting. We have to meet, we have to talk, we have to listen to the public, the public has to give input, and we'll eventually have to take a vote.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Falcone. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Mr. Boza.
Thank you, sir. I, I just wanted to point out that this entire work session was to discuss options with going to two meetings a month, because I brought that subject matter up in our Title I discussions. So we're really deviating from this work session when we're talking about all these things we want to put on a ballot, when we have a short period of time just to discuss how it would work out if we went to two meetings a month. I, I think we're putting way, putting the cart before the horse, talking about anything else, because I asked for these options when I proposed two meetings a month in the Title I. So I, I hope we could just, just discuss this tonight and, and digest it, and then come back with, with either another work session or, or put a plan together that, that's beneficial to everyone. I, I truly believe that two meetings a month and the way that Kelly has orchestrated this schedule creates more transparency and not less transparency for the public. So if, if we could just keep moving forward with discussing any problems with two meetings a month as opposed to anything else that we want to bring forward, that would be really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boza. And one of the things that-
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Uh, yeah, I just had a quick question as far as the work session topic, having that on the first and third. Will that mean that if we do not have anything for a work session, those times we would not be meeting? Is that what I'm gathering from this?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It would kind of flow the way work sessions flow now. We do have, in this handout, we have kind of mapped out having a couple different departments at certain times during the year giving a departmental update. We've got some time mapped out for talking about the budget, when we would normally be talking about the budget in the early spring, or excuse me, in the first few months of the year. And then when we get into later months in the year, if, you know, there's no topics to discuss, if a department doesn't have anything, if council doesn't have anything, we wouldn't necessarily need to have a work session. But we, I think we've got-
Okay.
-a decent map where we would end up having a work session almost every single week.
And we wanted to also make sure that we could provide those updates in different departments, you know, what's going on within the library, what's going on with the traffic, with the, um, the traffic system, what's going on with fire and GMT. But we wanted to make sure that you are all aware and alert of what's taking place with the individual departments, and have that structured out so that you know that this, this department is going. So if you have questions, you know in advance, but also to provide the entire city with information about those particular departments. Right now, we kind of lump everything into the budget portion of it, but we're hoping throughout the year we can do that. And then we were also asked to take a look at incorporating some staff training, which we did that, and then that is piggybacked with the vision plan that we'll have coming. So we were trying to take everything that we were told to do a couple weeks ago and put that into a format to, to bring back to all of you.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs., uh, so just out of curiosity, is there anyone that didn't speak that may have a quick question before Mrs. Jewen?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
Uh, not, um, so we talked about, and looking at the draft, you know, we had mentions when we discussed this about avoiding a conflict with a school board, but that doesn't seem to be the case with this. Is that, would, would that change then if we go, I mean, shouldn't we be at the first and third Mondays instead of the second and fourth, Kelly?
Yep, that's correct. Yeah, that's an easy change.
Okay, yeah. And then I, I think, you know, talking about transparency, you know, I, I recall we've had this discussion before. I know people are feeling that, you know, by limiting the amount of meetings, it'll limit the amount of time that they get to speak. I, I feel, looking at the calendar, you know, I, I feel for me as a, as a council person, and, and then as citizens, I think would have more time to actually delve into and have their questions answered, rather than, you know, trying to do it on a Saturday or a Sunday. And then Mondays, you know, trying to prepare for these meetings is very difficult. I, you know, I, I think doing this would allow actually more to happen for our council and for our citizens as we really kind of delve into what the departments are doing as well. I, I like the layout of, of the departments, you know, and, and having them come and not just discuss it in a hurry at budget time. The last two years have been a whirlwind, and I can imagine this, this year's budget cycle is going to be even more concerning, and I want to make sure that while we give our departments the opportunity to, to speak, I, I think by spreading it out and having it throughout the year, our citizens are going to really learn what, what our departments do in the city of Waterloo. So while this isn't by any means finalized, I think this prepares us for something and could usher in a new era that, that would bring more transparency to Waterloo.
All right, thank you. Anyone else before Ms. Jewen?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Klein.
I agree with what my colleague Ray Foyce just said. I, that weekend cramming, it's difficult because you can't always reach the people that you need to reach, and you feel, once in a while, you feel like you come in not knowing as much as you should about an item. And I, I like the idea of giving our staff more time to prepare and more in-depth preparations, and I just think that it's going to be much more efficient in the long run.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Mrs. Jewen?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what I was hearing that I think was a little confusing. My understanding, whether it's the second and the fourth or the first and the third, that whenever we have the council meeting, that's the same night we would have the work session. Initially, I was hearing that we were going to go the second and the fourth through the council, and then Mr. Greider said something about the work sessions being the first and the third. I don't think that's what the message is. Is that, Kelly, weren't you wanting to have the work sessions night as the council meeting?
Yeah, that's kind of what that handout is showing, is that the work session would occur on the same night as the city council meeting.
Exactly. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greider.
That was, yeah, that was my bad. That's a sleep-addled new father brain. Yeah, I, I agree with, with my colleague Ms. Klein and Mr. Foyce that giving people time to read the agenda, not just from Friday to Monday, but really reading it and having time to actually contact the city clerk's office, contact us, give us daylight hours to contact city departments, is good. And I, I fully agree with that. My apologies on confusing the dates.
No, you're fine. Thank you, Mr. Greider. Kelly, anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Well, I just wanted to add that I would, I would ask my colleagues on council to contact the public, because so far, any of the public I've talked to about this have been opposed to moving to two meetings. They believe the council should continue with those four meetings per month. That's what we were voted in to do, is to have four meetings a month. And they want to have that remain that way, the ones that I have talked to. That's why I really firmly believe that before we go about setting any plans to do anything, we need to submit this to a vote of the people next November in the municipal election.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Foyce.
I appreciate what Councilman Morrissey is talking about, bringing it to the public, and I, I get that. My thought about the public is having four meetings a month limits who has the opportunity to run for council, because if you have a job that is full-time, it makes it very difficult to maintain a schedule of, of having that every, every month. And I think, you know, fortunately, I have a flexible position. I know Mr. Greider is not as keen on, on some of these, especially the 3:30 time, because that runs into when he's working. And I know some of our council members who have worked in the past trying to find the time and balance that is, is there. And I think we have to be cognizant that there probably are a lot of people who would consider sitting where we are sitting, but can't do it because of the time commitment. And we may be limiting our, the opportunities for our citizens to be a part of their local city government. And, and I look at it, I really look at this as affording an opportunity for some of our council people, our, our citizens who, who want to be council people, and, and really expanding the opportunities for, for people.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I think Mr. Greider was first, and then you, Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Foyce. This is, I see as a, a small D democratic reform, because I, I know the people I've talked to have said, oh, I didn't even know that was on council until it's covered by the Courier-KWWL a day or two after. And they're like, well, I had really strong feelings about that. And I say, you know, I'm sorry, I wish I could have gotten to you. So I think, you know, I think, and this isn't a, a dig at the clerk's office, they're doing an awesome job, but getting an agenda out Friday, and then people have to contact them by Monday, that's really exclusive to a, to a particular segment of the population that can interact with government. By, by giving them a Wednesday to a Monday, that, that really does open up not just running for council, but engaging in council for working families, which time can be difficult. So I really do see this as making council more transparent and more, again, small D democratic for, for our community.
All right, Mrs. Jewen.
I just, in addressing Mr. Morrissey's comments about wanting public input, we would get that public input when this is put on the agenda for action. As with anything else that's on the agenda, the public has the opportunity to address it at that time.
All right, all right. We got one last question, and we'll clean this up.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Well, I, I guess I have not heard anybody from the public come up in my six and a half years on council, or going on seven years now.
Because if you have a job that is full-time, it makes it very difficult to maintain a schedule of, of having that every, every month. And I think, you know, fortunately, I have a flexible position. I know Mr. Greider is not as keen on, on some of these, especially the 3:30 time, because that runs into when he's working. And I know some of our council members who have worked in the past, trying to find the time and balance that is, is there. And I think we have to be cognizant that there probably are a lot of people who would consider sitting where we are sitting, but can't do it because of the time commitment. And we may be limiting our, the opportunities for our citizens to be a part of their local city government. And, and I look at it, I really look at this as affording an opportunity for some of our council people, our, our citizens who, who want to be council people, and, and really expanding the opportunities for, for people.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I think Mr. Greider was first, and then Ms. Jewen.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Vois. This is, I see as a, a small D democratic reform because I, I know the people I've talked to have said, oh, I didn't even know that was on council until it's covered by the Courier KWWL a day or two after. And they're like, well, I had really strong feelings about that. And I say, you know, I'm sorry, I wish I could have gotten to you. So I think, you know, I think, and this isn't a, a dig at the clerk's office, they're doing an awesome job, but getting an agenda out Friday and then people have to contact them by Monday, that's really exclusive to a, to a particular segment of the population that can interact with government. By, by giving them a Wednesday to a Monday, that, that really does open up not just running for council, but engaging in council for working families, which time can be difficult. So I really do see this as making council more transparent and more, again, small D democratic for, for our community.
All right, Mrs. Jewen.
I just, in addressing Mr. Morrissey's comments about wanting public input, we would get that public input when this is put on the agenda for action. As with anything else that's on the agenda, the public has the opportunity to address it at that time.
All right, all right. We got one last question, and we'll clean this up.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Well, I, I guess I have not heard anybody from the public come up in my six and a half years on council, or going on seven years now, asking that this kind of initiative be brought forward. Not one. It didn't come from the public. It came from council members and/or the mayor or city staff or whoever. The people need to speak on this. It needs to be up for a vote next November before we move ahead with this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Mrs. Jewen.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made with the second, all in favor. All in. Opposed? We adjourn. Thank you.
And allow me, before we bring the finance committee together, I need to look for the bill payment sheet, so just a moment, please. Welcome to the Waterloo City Council Finance Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
Motion-
Motion, motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of November 2nd, 2020 is proposed.
Mr. Mayor. Just a moment.
I, I have something to tell you. This happened so fast that we were zooming. I can't seem to bring the agenda up on my telephone to read. So if Mr. Morrissey would do all the reading, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. But we do have a motion and a second on the agenda in the minute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion hearing. Mr. Morrissey, seek the pre-authorizations and the budget line items, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following pre-authorizations expending over $2,500. First is the airport with the mountain estimated shipping handling, $2,414.66 plus $255.34 shipping and handling for sand, for use on the airfield during the winter weather. Next is the sewer department with the mountain estimated shipping handling, $7,309 plus $75 shipping and handling to re, the rebuild for the primary pump number one, building 205. Next is traffic operations with the mountain estimated shipping handling, $3,270.53 for the 40-foot Valmont Black Street light pole. And also to approve in the budget line items needing to be amended, the project budget for the fiscal year 2021, Iowa Department of Transportation Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure Grant funded at 100% with a grant from the Iowa Department of Transportation in the amount of $67,090, $67,090 as submitted by the airport.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion hearing. Finally, under bill payment, in the amount of $6,952,977.96 as stated in the bill payment dated November 9th, 2020, move to receive, place on file, and forward to the full council.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.